Welcome, everybody, to the June 21st Public Meeting of the Board of Education and the final one for the school year, which can't believe has gone so quickly. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hunkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. And I want to recognize our special visitors from Richmond Teachers Association, President Liz Baverstock and Vice President Tim McCracken, who is retiring, so congratulations. And Dionne McPhee from Richmond Disappearance Association. Announcements, and I actually have an announcement this time that I'm going to read. So as tonight is our final board meeting of the school year, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on our collaborative commitment to advocacy. Over the past year, our board has listened to the voices of our partner groups, dedicated staff, engaged students, and supportive parents, guardians, all with the aim of understanding the needs and priorities of our school community. Over the past few months, we have actively engaged in numerous discussions and meetings with our Mayor and Council of Richmond, our local MLAs, the Select Standing Committee on Finance, and our Members of Parliament. The board, with support from partner groups, directed our advocacy towards the enrollment pressures in the city center, underscoring the urgent need for expansion of existing elementary schools and new elementary schools that can accommodate our ever-growing student population. Additionally, we emphasized the critical importance of seismic upgrades, settlement workers in schools, and securing the necessary funding to support various ministry initiatives such as food security, indigenous education, and anti-racism. We're proud of the progress that we made as a board in raising awareness and initiating meaningful discussions with many of the important decision-makers. Our advocacy work has not only shed light on the challenges of our district faces, but also opened doors for collaboration and potential partnerships that will benefit our community. As we look ahead to the coming year, the board is committed to building upon the progress that we have made, and we remain steadfast in our commitment to advocating for the needs of our students, families, staff, and partner groups, ensuring that your voices are heard and your concerns are addressed. Thank you all for your dedication and support, and together we will continue to shape a brighter future for the education in the Richmond School District. Thank you, and we didn't do all this alone, so we want to thank all our education partners as well, because that's how we do things in Richmond. We do it together. Thank you. Hey, I'll move on. Adoption of the agenda. And I want to add, well, first of all, I want to ask this, Madam Secretary Treasurer, Cindy Wang, are there any materials not included in the packages available?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. We added one additional item to under item number 12. This is a draft letter from the ELL Consortium relating to the settlement workers in schools, and all other information and documents have been published on the district's website. Thank you.
So for the agenda, I want to add an item of correspondence, which Secretary Treasurer has referred to. I want to add it as 12C, and it is the letter from our ELL Consortium. And I would like to add that to the agenda. So with that addition, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the agenda. Moved by Trustee Larson, seconded by Trustee Wong. All those in favor? Oh, I need to be closer? Okay. All right. And they're non-opposed, so the motion is passed. Thank you. We have an agenda. There are no presentations, briefs, or special recognitions. This is a time where we can entertain some questions from the public. Public are invited to come forward if, like, to ask a question. And if you could speak into the mic and tell us who you are.
Hello, everyone. My name is Madeline Gould. I'm a local mom. I have one child in grade one and some other kids growing up going into the school district. So yeah, my question pertains to sort of an at-risk group. So within our schools, we have kids who might fall under the LGBTQ banner, and I know that you guys have included the SOGI curriculum as a means of, I don't know, addressing sort of that group. I don't Heather Larson, I read your comments. You had a Q and A question on the website where you said that the SOGI curriculum or approach maybe needed to be better understood by the public. So I was wondering if you could maybe explain a little bit more about what SOGI means in terms of how we see that as the public.
I think maybe I will get our Superintendent, Ms. Ryan, to speak to that question.
Okay.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hi.
So I'm going to defer to our lead on this file, and that's going to be Assistant Superintendent Jane McMillan.
Hi there. Just give me a moment. I'm just going to turn the camera on my computer on as well.
No problem.
Thank you for that. And farther, sorry, I'm finding my angle here. Further in the agenda, you'll see that we do have, and it was in the public package, the SOGI report, which is the annual report for our district. I think at its very core level that the SOGI policy, the district SOGI policy, is really about how do we help all members of our community feel valued, feel included, and see themselves reflected in their, in books that they read, in the experiences that they have. I'd say that is probably the core tenet that underlines both the SOGI policy and it's sort of how things are being enacted in school. So when you see, when we talk about how are how are all members of community reflected in resources and talked about when we talk about families, that would be sort of a, it's a very short answer to a complex question, but if I'm not addressing that, please feel free to ask another one.
No, I totally understand that overview. It makes sense. It's just I've been speaking to members of the community myself, various neighbors that I have of different backgrounds, and a lot of people are quite confused with the SOGI and the way that you guys are applying it, and they don't feel represented. So it's interesting to me, it being such a hot topic thing, that it's been sort of included in the curriculum at all, and maybe you guys, as a group, have been influenced by another, the British Columbia larger body. I'm not sure if it's bigger than just, you know, Richmond.
It is. It is in the sense that, I'm sorry, I have a note here about that, so I want to make sure I use my language correctly, that all schools, according to the Ministry of Education and Childcare, are required to have codes of conduct that address and protect anything under the grounds of discrimination under the B.C. Human Rights Code. So that is the bigger picture body in that regard.
Okay.
I would say for any families, if they have a concern at the school level, they could certainly connect with their administrator or reach out to myself at the district if they're feeling that they're not being included or have a specific question in that regard.
Well, I think it's more we cannot opt out, right? So my daughter's six, and she told me that there's three genders, according to her other friends at school, but she doesn't believe that based on our values. We don't speak to that, but, you know, I understand that the children who would be included in that maybe are kids that are in need of help or of more specific psychological help. I was just wondering if you knew the the population that's at risk for transgender identification later, if you knew the groups yourself.
So I wouldn't refer to an at-risk population in terms of statistics provincially or Canada-wide or worldwide. I don't have those statistics.
Okay, so when I listen to professionals speaking, it's kids that comes from divorced homes, children that have experienced sexual abuse, people who have experienced death of a family or friend. So functionality in the home is very important, and into a safe environment is really important. So I'm saying I don't understand why all children are being taught these things in the classroom if it's not relevant to a productive life down the road. So, I'm sorry.
Crystal, do you have anything that you would add to those comments?
Hi, good evening.
I see.
So you're asking some good questions, and I think what's really important to understand is that the discussion around issues related to SOGI is not necessarily SOGI 1, 2, 3, it is not a curriculum, but it's a guide to help us all make sure that every student in our school community feels included and welcomed regardless of how they identify. So if we look at what is in law in terms of what we need to have for policy, we have a SOGI policy that ensures that our students come to school regardless of how they identify and have a safe and welcoming environment. And if they have questions about their identity, they can talk to a trusted adult about that. It also means that if a child is talking in their classroom about the specifics of their, who their parents are or what their family makeup is, is that those conversations are welcomed and that there might be resources for that child to support them. But teachers are not teaching specifically about you can be this, that, or the other, but as children bring up issues around their own identity, we provide resources for staff to be able to support them through that conversation.
Understandable, but I've heard anecdotes of teachers drawing a line on the board and telling children that gender is fluid and that they can choose a gender. So it coming from the home and then just being kind of supported as an option in the school, I don't know if that's exactly true based on those situations.
Right, so if a parent has a concern about how a particular piece of curriculum is being taught or talked about in a classroom, then the first thing that they should do is speak to their teacher about it and get the full context of what has been happening and if it's in line with the curriculum. And if they're not satisfied with that conversation, then they should speak to their principal or vice principal about it to make sure that they have the full context and understanding.
Okay, I think I'll just make one more comment.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I think, I think that this is, as you can see, this is a staff conversation that we would welcome to have with you. So I would say that I would encourage you to connect with our Assistant Superintendent Jane McMillan, and you can connect with her by email. You can stay till a point at which she can connect with you here tonight, and then you can ask as many questions as you would like, and we could explain this in a more fulsome way.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I believe that based on what I'm hearing still, that, you know, we're ostracizing anybody from a religious community with this sort of curriculum because it doesn't speak to their values. So Muslims, Christians, anybody from a faith background isn't going to apply these things in their home. So I just, again, I'll say, I believe that the inclusion of the SOGI guide is an unnecessary one, and I'm just stating that to clear my own conscience as a parent, just to let you all know. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
And please do connect with your question. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay, oh, thank you. Can you just state your name and make sure you
My name's Adriana. I have four children in your district. I don't really have a question. I just wanted to share what I've heard from my own children. My grade six daughter has a youth group. We were discussing Pride Club, the same topic. And their classmates are shocked if they're not in Pride Club. It's like, it's having the opposite effect. So if you're not in Pride Club, then you're a homophobe or whatever. These are just normal kids. Apparently, every girl in grade six is bisexual. It's particularly impossible. I think it's gone too far. I think there's a line, and we've crossed it. I don't have a question. I just wanted to let you know that I've yet to meet one parent who's like, I'm so glad we're teaching our children sexual identity. Nobody ever mentioned chastity in sex ed. I must value that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Hey. So if there's no more questions, we'll move on to our executive report from our Superintendent, Mr. Rick Martin.
Thank you, Chairperson. We'll start tonight with Empowering Student Voice, inaugural Student Voice Forum. The Richmond School District hosted its first-ever Student Voice Forum, bringing together approximately 170 students from 10 secondary schools and alternate programs. Approximately 50 staff joined the students in support of open dialogue and authentic engagement. The day-long forum was filled with energy as students immersed themselves in table activities, eagerly exchanging personal stories and insights. This opportunity served as a reminder of the profound impact that arises from amplifying the voices of our students. Please join us in viewing video highlights of the event. Okay, I'll move on to the next item. A wonderful video.
No, that's unfortunate. You didn't get it.
So I'll carry on without the PowerPoint. The next item is National Indigenous History Month, and of course, and of course, today is National Indigenous Peoples' Day. June is National Indigenous History Month, a time to reflect on the history, cultures, and contributions of First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. Richmond schools are actively honoring indigenous history and fostering cultural understanding through various initiatives. At Splotbox Elementary, students and staff explored their school's land, which was historically a Musqueam fishing settlement. They created prominent displays to showcase their learning and knowledge. General Currie Elementary's grade-six students visited primary classes, sharing information and answering questions about National Indigenous History Month. Their initiative aimed to raise awareness and promote understanding amongst younger learners. U Boyd Secondary School organized a gallery walk titled "21 Things You May Not Know About the Indian Act." This event invited students to learn and reflect on the deep-rooted racism embedded in the Indian Act and its ongoing impact on indigenous people. Talmy Elementary welcomed indigenous storyteller and children's author Roberta Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy shared traditional legends and personal stories, providing valuable insights into indigenous culture and resilience. These opportunities within Richmond School, within Richmond Schools promote respect and understanding as we journey on the path to reconciliation. Embracing indigenous achievement, no PowerPoint still, honoring graduates in a cultural celebration. The Richmond School District celebrated the many achievements of grade-seven and grade-12 indigenous students with a special graduation celebration. This event brought together a diverse community of staff, students, and families, all united in their respect for the students' accomplishments. Musqueam Nation members and the district's indigenous success team played an integral role in guiding the students through a culturally immersive celebration. Pride Season Celebration, June marks Pride season, a nationwide tribute to the 2S LGBTQ+ community, highlighting their history, struggles, and achievements. At McRoberts Secondary, the school has organized weekly themes throughout June. These themes cover a range of topics, including the history of pride, the significance of the pride flag, ways we can be allies, and how to support and participate in pride events. These initiatives provide opportunities for students to learn, engage, and promote inclusivity within their school community. Splotbox Elementary SOGI Club dedicated their efforts to researching different pride flags, showcasing the evolving history and diversity of pride symbols. Students read the book, "We Are All Dots: A Big Plan for a Better World", which emphasizes the power of collaboration in achieving remarkable things. To visually express their learning, the school community came together to create a rainbow fingerprint display with each student selecting an animal, plant, or person represented by rainbow colors. These learning activities support the Richmond School District's commitment to equity, understanding, and respect for all. Inclusive inclusive education, raising deaf-blind awareness in Richmond schools. June is Deaf Blind Awareness Month. More than 460,000 individuals in Canada face the challenges of deaf blindness. Recognizing the existing service gaps nationwide, our district actively participates in the Making Away from Coast to Coast campaign throughout the month of June, dedicated to increasing awareness of deaf blindness and its profound impact on individuals' lives. As a demonstration of our commitment to inclusive education, the Richmond School District proudly hosts the Provincial Outreach Program for Students with Deaf Blindness. This highly dedicated, the highly dedicated teachers from POPDB play a vital role by providing consultation services to school teams. They deliver customized courses and deaf-blind interventions, offering professional development opportunities for educators. By nurturing and understanding of the unique needs of students with deaf blindness, our district strives to ensure their equitable access to education, effective communication, and a nurturing learning environment. Now I have another video, which we're likely not going to see. I think we'll just skip that one. It was a year-end in-review video, and so I'll just move on to some final ones. I apologize for that. The final words, as this is my last public meeting as Acting Superintendent, I would like to share a few words of gratitude to the Board of Education. Thank you for your patience, support, and kindness. To Cindy Wang, we could not have done this without your wisdom and expertise. Joyce, Shamira, and Tiffany, you are remarkable executive assistants. Thank you for keeping me on track. Senior team, a great deal has been added to your work for the past months. You are remarkable leaders and who always show up with a can-do spirit. Partners, QP, Musqueam First Nation, RASA, RDPA, RMAPS, RTA. Knitted together, you make up the fabric of the best place to learn and lead. Parents and students, it is a privilege to share in the development of the next generation. Thank you for your confidence and trust. Staff, past few years have reaffirmed my belief that you are the difference makers. When you're weary from the burden of it all, please know that we see you, we respect you, and we appreciate you. So the end of another school year is upon us. I know that summer months look different for each of us. I wish you all a summer of rejuvenation. So thank you, Chairperson. That concludes my report.
Thank you, and it's unfortunate that the video didn't work because we all wanted to see it. And the indigenous graduation was absolutely fantastic. And I too wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Ryan. He filled the shoes of our superintendent when he left his position, and he's been an amazing support for the board and myself and the vice chair and our senior staff, and he's led with patience and integrity and has vast knowledge of the education system and our district. And so I wanted to thank you too, because it was almost seamless. It really was. So we're so thankful that you were here to step in and, and help us out. Well, thank you very much, and you need to look forward to a well-deserved rest, I think. So thank you. Okay. So moving on, unfortunately, I'm grieving over the video, but maybe we could watch it another time. Okay. So approval of the minutes, there's a record of an in-camera meeting of the board Wednesday, May 24th, and also a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, May 24th, for approval. So I'm looking for a mover, trustee Larson and a seconder trustee sergeant. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you. This is arising from the prior minutes, and we have on our agenda the Strategic Plan Update for Priority Three. And that is our Executive Director of Facilities and Services, Project Team Director.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Actually, Secretary Treasurer Wang will be doing the first part of the presentation on the Priority Three.
The handful.
Goal one.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to provide an update on Strategic Priority Three, Optimize the Facilities and Technology, and I'm here to present for Mr. Rob Lang, who is the Executive Director for Learning and Business Technology. I want to, we want to share some progress that we share about the progress that's been made throughout the school year on the facilities and technology. A more detailed report is included in the public agenda package from pages 16 to 29. So Strategic Priority Three focuses on optimizing and improving our facilities and technology to provide a learning environment that's safe, secure, and accessible, and that inspires innovation and creativity. This priority has three goals. I'm going to speak to Goal One on behalf of Rob Lang, and Mr. Guyer is going to speak to Goal Two and Three. We will then welcome questions and comments from trustees and the public. Within Goal One, there are seven objectives and 41 key actions. Objective number one focuses on the implementation and annual review of the three-year learning and business technology plan. This technology plan is a living document. It establishes the roadmap of projects and priorities that's being undertaken by the technology team. This has been a very successful year in 22, 23, in achieving all the intended outcomes of the technology plan. Our team has a Day of Connection in July for our group to meet, to reflect upon, review, and update our priorities and objectives for the next three years. So the images on the screen is, were taken during the Day of Connection in last year as we were working on the technology plan for this year. Objective number two, that focuses on increasing access to technology, hardware and software across the district, ensuring students have reliable, relevant access to, to technology, software, and, and hardware. We've continued increasing the number of devices for our students in our districts, in our district. This has been done through increasing the number of district lending cards, adding additional 532 student devices through implementing the school-based technology lease model. And this will be available again in 23, 24 for all schools. And this will be available again in twenty-three, twenty-four for all schools. For the software, we have a list of district-approved software and that's maintained on the portal for all staff to access. So also on objective number two, our team has updated the asset inventory for all technologies. We built a report, it's called a Power BI report, to provide analytics and data visualization on all district assets. So these tools will be, will enable schools to to see all the technologies that they have in their building at any time and to see the build, the ages and the life cycle of these devices. And that will inform the 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 update of the devices in each school building. So on the right side of the screen, you can see that's a set of data from all of our, from a all-staff survey to assess our current printing services and the trends in in that, in the printing service. And this input from the survey and also along our other device data that will inform our future model for printer services. We also increased the number of iPads available to all TAs across the district. Also increased the technology access to the facilities services center to improve access for our support staff. So on to objective number three. This is focusing on expanding the professional learning opportunities to support the integration of technology into classrooms. We're very pleased with the success we've had this year. One example is the technology mini-conferences that we've hosted through, during the afternoons of each professional development day. All staff are invited invited to attend. Staff can select from a number of sessions that are offered to through the mini-conference tech, technology conferences. We had over six hundred fifty staff attending these workshops. So the poster on the screen is an example of the list of sessions that are available through those mini-conferences. Also, our technology team has done a phenomenal phenomenal job this year. They continue to provide one-on-one, small group or large group sessions to all staff as as needed, as requested. This year, all all schools have transitioned to publishing their report cards online and parents have a secure login access to their children's report cards. And to support this, we set up a structure where all parents can access to our tech help desk as needed. To date, the the help desk has responded to three thousand, over three thousand emails from our parents. So we've made substantial progress in redesigning the district internet and we're preparing for the launch, the launch in early twenty twenty-four. So that's objective number three. Objective number four involves expanding the use of Microsoft three sixty-five and Teams as a common collaboration platform across the district. So currently, every school department, secondary classes, they're using Teams for online discussions, file sharing, posting, collecting assignments. The data on the screen shows the usage across the, in the past six months across the district. And we're seeing the usages continue to increase. Objective number five is to strengthen the security of our network, data, software systems and practices. We implemented the district-wide policy, a password policy for all staff this year and that increased the security of their account access. So the minimum requirement in our password policy will take a computer five years to crack a passcode. So that's the minimum requirement. Every increase, each additional character that's added, the security, the security is just increased exponentially. So we have implemented that across the district. We have also expanded the implementation of the multi-factor authentication to all administrators, managers, professional staff and also the SBO building staff. And we're planning to further expand on the multi-factor authentication to all staff next year. We also started our video surveillance project and the implementation or installation will continue into next year. Also, we're making making changes to the structure of the wireless network by to increase privacy and security by adding additional components or segments in the entire network. So we can provide different restricted levels of access for different types of users. Objective number six focuses on building, continues, continues to build on the theme of cybersecurity. So we've implemented a security awareness and training program to increase education. We build school staff capacity to identify and minimize cyber threats. We released a series of modules this year for, to all staff and teaching staff more about how to detect phishing emails and protect their user credentials. We also conducted two internet phishing campaign by using a simulated malicious email threat and sending that email to all staff. So all staff have received that email, which appeared to be a regular email. But if you click on the link contained email, a window will pop up and say, you know, this is a phishing email. Please go to the next link to take a cybersecurity training. So that had happened this year, which, so so on this slide, you will see the stats and how many people have, how many staff attended the training this year and the effectiveness of that training. So that's objective number six. Objective number seven focuses on enhancing wireless access and network stability. So this year, we used the software to track and monitor the network bandwidth. The graph on this, on the slide shows the the network traffic through a average day. So you can figure out, pretty much figure out from the graph when the school day starts and when it ends based on, based on the usage of the network. So having this type of visibility is very important. It helped us monitor the traffic on our network and increase the, and we can basically increase the bandwidth capacity when when we need it. So with the continued increase in in usage and reliance on technology, this type of work will become more and more important in the future. We also conducted a network infrastructure review and we're preparing a plan to update our network wireless infrastructure to make it more stable and secure. So that is the, all the seven, all of the seven objectives. Before I conclude on behalf of Rob Lang, of course, I want to thank all our, all members of the technology team who have been working extremely very hard this year. I also want to acknowledge the digital literacy consultants, all teacher consultants, all staff and students for their engagement, partnerships, commitment, patience and innovation throughout this whole school year by using technology as a tool to enhance and support learning and business functions. I also want to take a moment to express my, our sincere appreciation to the Board of Education and Facility Services Team who have worked very hard this year on the renovation of the new Riddle Park Resource Center as the future home for the technology team. And the facility is looking outstanding. Our team is eagerly waiting for moving in the summer. Thank you to the Board of Education for making this a priority and thank you for approving the funding for this project. And also to Mr. Guyer and his team for your dedication and work on the renovation project. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Guyer for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. So under goal two, so we have two goals in Facility Services and Richmond Project Team. The first is that our facilities are well-maintained, equitable, safe and conducive to learning. So this is more focused on maintenance, operations, planning and development. Then goal three is that the district fosters energy efficient and environmentally sustainable facilities and practices, which focuses mostly on our Energy and Sustainability Department. Under goal two, we have six objectives and eighteen key action areas. Under objective one, we had three key action areas. So, and all three, I'm pleased to say have been completed by October this last year. And that was to establish cross-departmental management teams, which basically means that any part of facilities, everyone knows what each is doing within the Facility Services Center. And our common goal is the provision of equitable learning environments. We've worked with the educational leadership team to ensure that sustainable cohort management's maintained. And we have introduced the current board to the concept of completing the comprehensive program and boundary reviews that started in twenty nineteen but were put on pause during the pandemic, which will look at the rest of the schools that were touched out of the twenty-seven that we had boundary changes done to. And we have completed and implemented our pilot climate risk action project at ten district sites. So it's great when you've got a team that's very focused, very dedicated to strategic planning. And and when you're working with a group of facilities, engineers and other professionals, we're all about getting the job done, so ticking it off, ticking off, saying, okay, that's done. Now we can move on to the next thing. And that's what we've been doing. So to get objective one done, and it's it's going to be continuous improvement. We're very excited. Goal, objective two is to provide clean, healthy and safe facilities. And this, we had, I do this objective, we had three key areas. And again, all of these areas have been completed. So the Operations Department review, we brought in a third-party consultant to look at our our current governance, staffing procedures and practices so that we can actually optimize the dollars we have to improve the cleanliness in our schools. And we've implemented almost all of the options. And one of the things I'm just going to pause and say that again, I thank the board for not this last budget, but the budget before when when it was approved to have, to add an assistant manager to our Operations Department. We were one of the few school districts in the province that didn't have an afternoon shift manager. And I think from what we've been hearing from schools, it's made a huge difference by having a supervisor on afternoons who's doing regular checks on our staff, which the majority work on afternoon shift. So that's been very positive. And that was one of the number one items that came out of that review. The facilities renewal program. This is a program that we stitched together. Funding we get from various parties, whether it's the government with the annual facility grant, school enhancement program funding, carbon neutral funding and some local capital funding in our, in the district. And what we've done is we've built a five-year rolling plan that we present every year and then implement mostly in the summer. And again, the idea is to really enhance the health and safety of our occupants, our buildings. And the the building I show up there is Garden City Elementary. And I think it's amazing what a coat of paint inside and outside will do to improve the curb appeal and the overall feel of the building and and the the level of optimism with the with the occupants. And that's what we want to continue doing is to modernize our buildings. And then we did develop and implement post-COVID nineteen facilities operations plans. And we've stuck to them and, you know, pleased to say we had no real issues come up with that. And we're very happy to have that key action item checked off. Third objective is to implement the twenty twenty maintenance review recommendations to improve, to optimize service delivery and improve the quality and timeliness of maintenance to our facilities. We had, under this, we have two action items. One is to consolidate and reorganize maintenance operations, transportation, planning and development into the new Facility Services branch. That item is completed, but now we're going to be taking it apart again with the speaker retiring. However, what we've developed within the group is a whole new understanding of each other's department. And I am very confident that whoever does take over the lead for the Facility Services Group and for the Richmond Project Team, that the two will carry out the the coordinated effort that we've developed over the last three years since we have merged. And I'm very confident that they'll stay as a branch with two, with two directors. But we'll have, but again, the idea is to just keep pushing forward everything that we've developed over the last three years as as a team. So like I said, it was nice to say that we did this, but now we're going to undo it. But we're confident that we're going to be able to carry out everything that we set out under the the one, under, under one executive director. And then the other item was to replace our antiquated work order system with a new asset management software. That was actually, we actually completed that last summer. But the nice thing is, is that we're slowly adding the, making more use of the functionality of the software. So now we're actually able to better schedule repairs based on service history to parts of a building, which we never had before. And right now I can say that, whereas I remember when Max Panda was our software of choice when I first came to the district and everybody collectively hated it. I can say with a hundred percent confidence, everybody loves the Asset Planner software. So it was an excellent investment for our facilities. Option for, or objective for is to implement strategic recommendations in the long-range facilities plan. So this one has has four key action items. One is to update the nineteen, the twenty nineteen LRFP. That was done in in November twenty twenty-one. And we're currently working on our, on our new, the new addition. There was, we had another item to complete the comprehensive boundary review. As I mentioned before, we were all set to keep going after we got the first phase done, pandemic hit. Now we just put a pause on it, but we're hoping we can, it'll come back in some way, shape or form. We just don't know when yet. We were looking, we were, one of the key actions was to develop and obtain and update the plan for expansion of elementary school capacity, knowing that the North Central Region, which includes the city center planning area, is a hot button. The numbers have gone up faster than I think we, anyone would have expected, which is not an unusual phenomenon with what's happening in the lower mainland. Other school districts are feeling the same. But again, we're confident that our our strategy is going to, is going to pay off in the end and we're continuing to work on that. And then the other item that was, that was a key item was to establish new childcare operations at existing school sites. And little did we know, back when we put this plan together, the strategic plan that that the Ministry of Education was going to merge and become education and childcare. And now there's a whole new and and improved focus on providing childcare to maximize utility of our school sites. And what I can say to that is what we've been able to do is so far, we've, we're almost finished. The first two childcare facilities that we've done since the, well, the initial site was Tomset that we completed a couple of years ago. But Maple Lane and Steve's, we were going modular with that. Maple Lane is is almost finished. Eventually, we're going to get our building permit for Steve's. It's been, it's been a very interesting process with the city because they don't know how to deal with modular buildings, but I'm not going to say that. And we've got four more locations that we're currently, we've placed an order for the units. We expect the modular child cares to arrive later this year, early next year for adult, for the Adult Education Center, which we always contemplated in the courtyard area that we would put a childcare facility because it's a nice fit when you have adult education and childcare on site. So that childcare is going to be a little bit larger than the other ones in that all the other sites that we've established or that we got approval for are for schooly or preschool children's age. At that facility, we're going to be going infant toddler plus preschool. At that facility, we're going to be going infant toddler plus preschool. So it's a little bit larger, but it's going to, it's going to, we believe it's going to best service our adult education population and and perhaps even increase the population. Knowing that, you know, parents have a place to to drop their children off while they're taking their their classes. And as I mentioned earlier, we did introduce the current board to the concept of completing the the comprehensive program and boundary reviews that started in twenty nineteen, which could and should assist in the development of a city center elementary school and other school expansions. Continuing objective four, we have we have two other key action items. One is in collaboration with facility services. The Richmond project team will update the five year capital plan and submit every year. So this is an ongoing item and I'll be speaking to the current years, capital plan submission later in this meeting. But we've, again, this is an objective we check off every year. And and then the final key action item in this area is to identify opportunities to address space and operational deficiencies of non school functions. Non school functions being departments. And as Ms. Wang mentioned in Mr. Lang's presentation, the picture I show up there is the new sign that we put up for the for Riddell Park Resource Center. So it's not Riddell Park Adult Education anymore. It's now the Riddell Park Resource Center. And that project was a result of again, forward thinking on behalf of the board when we presented the concept of taking a portion of Mitchell Elementary School that was slated for demolition, repurposing it for adult education, relocating adult education to free up the space at Riddell Park. And now Riddell Park is is going to be opening by the middle of next month to its new functions, which will be for the district resource center and library support services, which were already there. And learning and business technologies, which is a really good fit, working together. So we're very happy with getting that done. And really that checks off almost all the boxes we had for departmental accommodations and anything we look at beyond beyond the the current roster of projects will be something we'll have to look at. It'd probably be a year or two down the road because we've basically completed that work. Our fifth objective in this area is to work collaboratively with the Ministry of Education to accelerate seismic upgrades of our schools. And you'd think that this is, this is not a map. Why? Why would this be an objective? Too many school districts take that for granted. This school district doesn't. Our relationship with the ministry is very strong and we want to keep it that way. We've been very, very fortunate in that our business case development has been generally turned around very quickly. The only reason Dixon Elementary has not been approved yet. It's because the the dollar value went over a threshold and it required greater investigation from Treasury Board. But we are fully expecting that that final approval will be coming next month. That we've had no indication to say it's not. And once that happens, we'll be going full bore into designing that project. And then the other, and then we also got Deefan Baker Elementary supported in the capital plan submission from last year. And we're, we're underway, we're underway with our business case development. And the reason that I put this out there with Deefan Baker is because there were only six seismic upgrades approved in the province last year and we got one of them. So I think the, I think the all the others came on the island and the island is kind of a new focus because it's just when they found out how bad their soil conditions were and comparable to ours. Now we have to kind of spread things out a bit, but for us to get one out of six, I I still think is pretty good. Is it enough? No. Is it fast enough? No. But we'll take it. One, the other key action item that we have under this objective is looking at opportunities where we've got two or more underutilized schools that could be replaced with fewer schools. Well, those opportunities are shrinking. Where if you look back five years ago, we had a number of smaller elementary schools that that had low populations that you could look at possibly putting together, maybe replacing three schools with two. Those opportunities are shrinking now, and it's a good thing. We didn't do any of that planning or that we strategically pushed it off to see whether any of these test cases were going to come to fruition and they haven't yet. So but it's still on our radar. Any opportunity we have to optimize our facilities, we're going to do that. Our final objective under goal two is to create learning environments that are flexible and and support inclusive educational practices. And in this area, this involves a lot of collaboration between our project managers, our maintenance managers, our planners, our educational leaders. So they, so we can look at flexible learning environments within a school where we could be using where we could be using multipurpose rooms for mo- for for different programs. We're look, we're actually going to be intro- introducing seamless kindergarten at Whiteside, I believe, next year, where it'll be preschool, working with kindergarten in this, in the same room. So it's, so those are the kind of opportunities we're looking at. And what kind of renovations do we have to do to make that happen? So we're constantly looking at these opportunities because we want to, again, the more utility we can get of our buildings, we're paying for the utilities anyway. We're paying for the cleaning anyway. Let's get more than five hours use out of this, out of a school if we can. And then to establish flexibility whereby yeah, classrooms, multipurpose rooms, share space with childcare operators. And I just mentioned that. The other thing that we've done is we have created flexible outdoor learning spaces at a number of our schools and we, and that number keeps growing. And we've also completed a number of school library renovations to actually turn them into learning commons, which is important because then it's not just a book warehouse. It's it's with movable furniture. So you can have different activities happening in those rooms. And we're doing that on a fairly regular basis and really proud of those accomplishments. So I'm going to speak briefly to goal three, which is that we foster energy efficient, environmentally sustainable facilities and practices. Under here, we've got three objectives and fifteen key areas. First objective is to develop and implement a five year sustainability and climate action plan. And that's done. We completed that and it was approved by the board in December twenty twenty one. And we've implemented the plan. We've undertaken a number of steps. We're nowhere near where we need to be. But then again, this is a a longer term plan and we're, and and a lot of the items that were contained in the report, a lot of the recommendations are very costly. And so we're trying to leverage what we can when we have a seismic upgrade approved. How can we leverage that to do some energy upgrades to be consistent with this plan? But there's a few of the strategies that were contained in that report that we have been successful at. One was the pre occupancy flushing of buildings. And this is a hangover from COVID. Where what we used to do is, or what we've been doing is for two hours before school starts is basically running our fan systems to flush stale air and bring fresh air in. We've, we've, we're nearly finished with our classroom ventilation program, which will extend this type of flushing and and occupant comfort and temperature control to classrooms that currently didn't have any mechanical ventilation. So that's part and parcel. And then we've completed waste audits at one elementary, one secondary and the board office. Our second objective is to improve energy efficiency, climate resiliency and sustainability through capital improvements. And we had three key areas. What we can say about those key areas is that so what we've done, we've developed a regular schedule of continuous optimization projects. And what that means is constantly looking at how we best utilize our the energy that goes into our building. So if we can get more, if we can turn the lights off more, optimize our our energy bill, that's something that we do on a, on a very regular basis. We've been very fortunate. We've got two electric buses. And now we've got approval for the ministry or from the Ministry of Infrastructure. So we still need money from the Ministry of Education and childcare. But we've got approval to purchase six more electric buses by twenty twenty, by the end of twenty twenty five, as well as fifty percent of the cost of infrastructure. So that's putting in the charging stations at facility services. So that's been approved in our capital plan. Three of the buses are are included for capital funding. And the other thing that we've, the other item we've done here is we've completed our consultant, through our consultant Prism Engineering. We've completed associate clean B C and B C hydro fleet ready assessments. It'll allow for another fifty percent upgrade to be covered. And that's, that's looking beyond just buses. That's looking at increasing the number of charging stations we have throughout our district, not just at the school board office. Not just at tech services or it'll be Riddell Park where we're putting these in. And not just facility services, we could, we could look at, again, a fifty percent contribution to expand that network. Under the same objective, we've been developing project definition reports. They've been codified for modular childcare, modular daycare center programs. So what we're doing here is we're, what we're doing is with with government, both at our side for seismic upgrades, but also for the the construction of modular child cares, we're putting in heat pumps wherever we can. It's electric with gas backup, which means for every kilowatt of energy that goes into one, into a heat pump, three hundred kilowatts comes out. And we also have the ability for heating and cooling, which most of our units don't have right now. But as we go through these projects, we're trying to leverage again, the capital funding we get, so we can improve our energy efficiency on on our heating and cooling systems. And every project definition report we do right now for the ministry has an option for low carbon electrification. We actually can actually included that in the Dixon and Debeck projects and government's not quite ready yet to spell, to to shell out the extra money for those options, but I suspect that that's going to be changing over the next two years. And our final objective under goal three is, you know, to implement sustainable practices and programs to improve waste diversion, reduce generation, greenhouse gas emissions, conserve water and promote climate action. We have two key action item, action areas and under this. And what we've been able to do, we have conducted waste audits at a number of our elementary and secondary schools. So as the board office and right now our diversion rates only thirty seven percent, we need to get that up. We're going to be putting more programs together to push that as part of the zero waste strategy. But we have had in the last year, eight or since this program started in twenty, in two thousand and seven, we've had a twenty three percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And the target by thirty, twenty thirty is to get to fifty percent. So we're actually doing very well there. Fleet emissions, we're at twenty two percent. And again, that target is forty percent by twenty thirty. We truly believe that when we get the the six electric buses, that number, we will more than hit that goal in time for the deadline. We've had an eleven percent reduction in energy and electricity use and a twenty eight percent increase in corporate average fuel economy. So that's when you start right sizing vehicles based on the fleet. And I forgot, we do have one more objective. I apologize. I'll get through it quickly. So the fourth objective is to increase sustainability, education and awareness, training and learning opportunities for staff and students. We had three objectives and I'm very pleased to say that one of them has been, had had been completed early on in this process. And that we do have a teacher consultant that's focused on science and sustainability. And what we've been able to do in 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 conjunction with that individual is we've provided updates on the district's sustainable climate action plan and incentive initiatives. And we've received feedback from staff and students. We've expanded our energy wise network thermal comfort campaign to twenty sites, which has resulted in a ten percent reduction in thermal comfort complaints and a point seven decrease, percent decrease in natural consumption, natural gas consumption. Some people may ask, why is that so low? Two reasons. The pandemic meant that we had to, we had to pump more air in. And in schools that had, or that the schools that didn't have ventilation, that the windows were all open. Our units had to work twice as hard, burning so much more gas. But we're going to get that number back down with everything that we've been doing in the last year. We've completed the implementing, the implementation of waste stream diversion data into Power BI, which is a very powerful software that can then push out data to schools that is, that actually makes sense. So without going into a lot of the details, very simple. But it's a great data warehouse for us. We had our first reconstituted Richmond Sustainability and Advisory Committee meeting two months ago, very well attended. And we've reconstituted Eco Cafes and these are all items that got stalled because of the pandemic. Well, now we're getting them back on track. And we've had monthly meetings with the City of Richmond Green Ambassadors, which is a secondary, secondary student volunteers program. So we have been extremely busy in facilities. Because for us, we 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 have, we look at everything two ways. One, this is a strategic plan. Everything we do has to be congruent with the strategic plan. And then it has to be congruent with the long range facilities plan. If it doesn't fit into both, then we question whether we should be doing this or not, or whether we need to make adjustments to our plans. But generally speaking, I would say that facility services and the Richmond project team have worked awfully hard to, to, to complete our share of the strategic plan. And we're very proud of our accomplishments to date. And I'm very proud of the accomplishments of my managers, my staff, everybody down to our lowest paid custodian, everyone's pitched in and I just want to say a big thanks, Simon, and a big thanks to the board for all the support that that you've given us over the years to let us do our jobs properly. Because the way I always look at things, you help us to help you back. And ultimately, we're all going to help the kids. So thank you.
How much? It's so much. I'm sitting there listening to it thinking, wow. Okay, any questions from trustees, trustee Larson?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I have never seen the facilities operations more healthy in what you're doing, but also in the people that are involved. Everyone. It was never healthy like that before. And I, I, I think we all know that when people feel safer, work together, respect each other's duties and and you explain that when you, when you present to us. And it's even if you don't have to explain it, you can feel it in the words that you're using. You see your teamwork together. You see your teamwork together with educational people, which has to work and you're making that happen. And just in the short six years that I've been here, I've learned so much about facilities and I still have so much more to go. But I have to say, just in 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 a light way that I get pure joy riding my bike around Richmond. And when I see what's happened to our schools and how they look outside, I get home and I either email Frank or I text him and say, I'm in front of Mano Steve's and it's looking fabulous. And that's hot, like it's everywhere. So I, I, yeah, it's, it's, I appreciate the knowledge that you provide us with and wisdom because that helps us do our job. So thank you.
Yeah, I have the trustee sergeant.
Well, thank you very much to both reports on behalf of Mr. Lang, who between all of the senior staff, when I think about where we were even a year ago or two years ago. And what we all had to do to manage, get through and make sure the kids were in the school. So but I wanted to say the strategic plan is so awesome in that everybody is working towards the goal. And I really appreciate these updates to our public and to ourselves to say, okay, this is what we've got done. And we have a strategic meeting tomorrow night and we're going to look, where should we go? What should we do? But for you, Frank, on your last night, Mr. Guyer, to be able to to verbally say, you know, part of the legacy that you have left the district along with your team must be very rewarding. And so I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work. And it's very evident in the document that is, that you have presented. Plus, that document will be Plus, that document will be transferred along and the work will continue. And so just heartfelt thank you for everything you've done for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. And again, I just wanted to echo the words mentioned by my trustee colleagues and give thanks to the wonderful staff that's behind this report. So I did have a handful of questions, just to get to know the issues a little more. In terms of goal one and objective five, it was mentioned that security cameras will be installed around our ten high schools. And so I'm just wondering about the scope of this surveillance and how it would comply with existing board policy. Properly conduct survey.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. I'm not the expert on in this area, so I will bring the question back to Rob and, I mean, Mr. Lang, and he will make sure to provide the response to you.
All of the question is for Mr. Guyer, so. Here we go. So for goal two, objective one. Sir Guy, you mentioned the climate risk assessment project that's going to be piloting. So I'm just wondering what that entails in more depth if you can enlighten us.
What that, what the climate risk assessment is, is looking at the vulnerability of our, sorry, like this, is the vulnerability of our buildings in case of climate action. So looking at how do we future proof our buildings in case of flood, in case of, you know, with global warming, the the effects of that. So it's how resilient our buildings are. And that's what these assessments are. So we've looked, so so far, we've done ten of them. And this is something that it's it's a provincial initiative that's been around for quite a while. But what we've done, we've again codified it in our District Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. Because we we automatically think in Richmond that the number one thing that's going to get us is going to be an earthquake. It's not actually flood is actually going to be could be much more profound and much more likely if that were to happen. So how do we prepare our buildings for that? What what do we need to do? We is it something as simple as moving our electrical panels up higher in our older buildings, you know, things like that? So that's, that's what that's about. It's basically making our buildings more climate proof, for lack of a better term.
That's awesome, because I know that being here in Richmond, like you mentioned, all these factors really do play in. Don't go the right way. So I think very good measures to make sure that we're we're being permitted to.
Right.
I want to move on to goal three. And our mentions about EV chargers on school site, our district's facilities. Do we have any chargers that are at schools? And if so, how many schools actually have EV chargers?
So the schools that the the current schools that have chargers are those that are, they were actually installed by the by the city. So what I know for sure is, I believe, the Boyd site has, I think, one or two. Hamilton has some, but we haven't installed any at schools ourselves yet. Part of the reason is is that we weren't totally sold of the technology and and on the return on the investment. Because obviously, if you're going to put out the money to put the charging stations in, you want to make sure that you can recover that the cost, the capital cost in a in a certain period of time. So it has to make sense for a business case. So the city didn't, they 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 took it upon themselves to go ahead with that. We didn't stand in their way. Because in some cases it is on our property, but we've got, you know, agreements in place and legally everything's set up. But what we want to do is is start to look more strategically. Because now the the cost of the EV chargers has gone down, which makes the business case a little bit easier to make. And so and with government funding, we're going to be looking a lot harder at where those locations ought to be and where, you know, and and are we going to get enough use of them? So, yeah.
And I think that's certainly an area where perhaps we can look for more for more knowledge and investigation, because I think there's an opportunity there. Objective three, I think it was mentioned that a lot, a lot of our figures indicate that we have reductions and the rates are very successful and hitting the targets. The one area where it doesn't, it seems, is the our natural gas consumption. So I'm just wondering how much it has gone up.
Yeah. Yeah, it it the last, through the chair, the last few years have been brutal for us. And it's a combination of of two things. One was the pandemic and the need to bring fresh air in in our classrooms that didn't have mechanical ventilation. And as the board knows, and you know, we approved the funding to to do this, to to retrofit these schools with this technology. The problem we had is that, again, we're bringing cold air above radiators, which means the radiators had to work twice as hard, which meant the natural gas went way up. So that was, that was probably the biggest impact. The second biggest impact is we have had three very cold winters in a row and long duration of cold snaps to a point where, you know, where we were, we were trending downwards when it came to temperatures are trending upwards, I guess. Now it's getting colder again. So all the savings that we achieved early in the in the cycle have been literally obliterated, which is no different than any other school district that has older buildings. But we're confident that once we've got, and we're going to be finishing the ventilation project this summer, and we're, our digital controls are being upgraded. At the same time, we truly believe we're going to be back on track when it comes to both bringing in more fresh air. But it's tempered fresh air and it's not going to work against the heating system. It's going to work with the heating system. So we believe those numbers are going to go back up. We're going to see greater reductions over the next year.
But you don't have a figure for how much it went up.
It's really, it's, it's a lot of this is based on on temperature. And no matter what our projections are going to be, they're going to be wrong. Because you can't, one of the things we've learned, we always go by weather candidate data as to what they predict climate's going to be, and it's been dead wrong for the last three years. So every time we make a projection saying, here's how many heating days we think we're going to need or heating degree days we're going to need, we've been off and it's and and everyone's been off. So we're kind of hoping that maybe this roller coaster of weather is going to start to stabilize. But so we can be a little bit more proactive with our projections.
There's our going, our weather and then our climate is going to get more extreme as climate change evolves. And so
Yep.
Zilliancy is so important.
Correct.
And then my last question, just on objective four. So I'm just wondering if you can also enlighten share what the 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 proposed teacher consultant for sustainability, what that would look like in terms of supporting schools in environmental education and sustainability practice.
Trying to think if I should be looking over at the assistant superintendent's table if somebody else has a better answer than I'll have for that position. Anybody?
Are you referring to the current position that's science and sustainability?
Yeah.
So to the chair, if I may, we do have a teacher consultant and that was part of a board approval previously, who has a portfolio, a dual portfolio of science and sustainability and responds to schools in terms of in the classroom where they may want some support that would involve anything to do with either of those topics. K to twelve, it's a big portfolio, also works closely with facilities, particularly with regard to eco, eco cafes, eco wise grants, implementation. And then as director, executive director, Guyer has indicated in terms of the district climate action plan, has worked to develop and support lessons and would help share those out.
And I, and I could just add that they, that both our energy manager and our energy sustainability manager and the teacher consultant have worked very closely together. They actually like each other. And I I thought that their, that their co presentation at the at the Sustainability Action Team meeting, our inaugural one, was very positive, very uplifting. And a lot of people came away feeling very good about our future when it comes to sustainability.
So it sounds like it is an existing position.
Yep.
This reads in the report that we need to develop a business case, so I was.
And we did, that was done very early on. Yeah, we, we actually, when, when they, when this, when this strategic plan was put together, there was no position. And it was approved the following year. So, yep.
Thank you very much.
Well, how far we've come, that's amazing. The amount of work that has gone on in in the areas that are presented tonight. I was, I had myself on the list because I was thinking about the video surveillance and also thinking about our policy, because that policy was written a very long time ago. So, you know, it may be a good idea to look at that again. It it could still be relevant, but at the time, video surveillance was very, very new. And and we realized we had to have a policy, but it's been a really long time and video changed. I'll take one more question from trustee Belize and we should move on because we have several.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for good report and for your hard work to both of you. And my question, one to each, for each of you. And for the first one, it's cybersecurity to enhance awareness and productivity. We know that the cyber threat or cyber security issue is one of the issues raised in the ERM, Enterprise Risk Management. I'm very glad that we have this awareness strategy. But my question, I guess, would be, how prepared are we if there is a cyber threat or cyber issues or cyber attack? So that's my first question.
Yeah, again, I'm not the expert in this area, but I'll certainly bring the question back to 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 Mr. Lang.
And my next question would be with regard to objective one of goal three, which is a five year sustainability and climate action plan. We know that this was approved by the board December twenty twenty one, and this is a five year plan. So I'd like to know your assessment or any update with regard to those issues still to be done.
Yeah, through through the chair, there's, as I said, there's a lot of items contained in that report, a lot of recommendations, and many of them have dollar figures attached to them. And what we've been trying to do is trying to strategize. How do we pick up, how do we pick off the low hanging fruit first that could perhaps save us money down the road? We're making good progress, I would say. You know, we're, we're a little more than a year into it. But the 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 bigger ticket items are the ones that we're spending, we have to spend more time trying to figure out what other levels of government funding can we, can we leverage to be able to undertake this work? Because a lot of these items are quite costly. Nothing comes cheap when it comes to sustainability. And what's made things even worse and more complicated for us is just this whole supply chain. The world's gone nuts. Let's put it this way, when it comes to construction, all costs, but construction costs, what used to, a good example is what used to cost us about ninety thousand dollars to buy a portable is now doubled that price. And the same goes for any kind of niche equipment and sustainability, any equipment tied to sustainability, climate action, energy. It's, it's considered a niche industry and it's consumers' demand that's driving up the cost of supply. So we're trying to be creative. And how can we, if we're, if we get a seismic project up approved, how do we slip in some of this work? And then where else can we get money through hydro grants, through Fordis Grants, through Natural Resources Canada to get these things done? It's, it's, it's a five year plan, but it doesn't necessarily mean that everything's going to be done in those five years. It's basically saying, here are the different items we're going to look at. I I would recommend trustees, it's on our website. Have a look at it and you'll see kind of the breadth of of the situation if you haven't already had a chance to look at it. And if there's any questions, feel free to reach out to myself or Jonathan Hall, who's our manager of energy sustainability and our resident expert in that area.
Thank you very much. I think we'll wrap it up. We've got several more reports, but thank you. That, you know, just blows me away what we, what the strategic plan of, you know, many goals and objectives we've fulfilled. So thank you. Next on the agenda is our SOG advisory committee update. And there's a report from the Director of Instructions, who does student services and data analytics, analytics attached, and that would be Mr. Rav Jha.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The purpose of this report is to provide an update regarding the implementation of policy one oh six, sexual orientation and gender identity, which is grounded in strategic plan priority number two, equity and inclusion. Implementation of the policy continues to curve at both the school and district levels with the overarching goal to work towards providing a safe environment for all students, staff and families, including those who identify as two S LGBTQ plus. As you can see in the report, there are four different goal areas that the SOG advisory works on in subcommittees through the school year. A few areas of focus this year include continued opportunities for students to regularly connect. So this year we held two in person rainbow cafes for secondary students. And that culminated with a third gathering last week with a pride party with a carnival theme. The students from across secondary schools in Richmond organized that with the support of a youth action grant from the McCreary Society. Another area of focus continues to be student leadership. So the SOG advisory committee regularly welcomes student representatives from across the district to participate in the established four meetings. In one meeting this year, we did have students from McNeil Secondary School speak about the rainbow installation at their site. And they eloquently spoke about the themes of inclusion, connection and areas of growth, while expressing appreciation to the advisory for support during this process. Another area of focus this year has been our district coordinator, who is working with elementary and secondary teams of educators to focus on representation of student experiences in the classroom. So these meetings have focused on ensuring that two S LGBTQ plus students see themselves represented during classroom discussions and other school activities. And these sessions will continue into next year as these teams look to increase awareness, understanding and support teacher facility around SOG topics. This year, we also ha- held our first ever district wide in person event for staff, which was a rainbow networking event. And that was open to any staff member that identifies as two S LGBTQ plus or identifies as an ally or someone wanting to learn more about SOG. Another area of focus continues to be the SOG Innovation Grant. So this year we had staff inquiry teams in five elementary schools and two secondary schools engaged in this grant process with either a direct focus on SOG related topics or on themes of intersectionality related to SOG. So perhaps weaving in indigeneity or anti racism in those, in those innovation grants. We continue to communicate with all staff through a quarterly newsletter that's entitled Ask the Kids, again, centering student voice and student voice that is centered in those advisory community meetings. And that continues to emphasize support for staff in their work through approaching things through a lens of equity and inclusion as well as SOG. So in conclusion, we are very appreciative of the Board of Education's ongoing commitment to the work outlined in this report, supporting students and staff who identify as part of the two S LGBTQ plus community through a lens of equity and inclusion contributes to the district's nurturing of safe and caring school communities.
Thank you. The report, do trustees question? Trustee Sergeant.
Yeah, thank you very much for the annual update, something I'm so extremely proud that we have a policy. It was, I think, over my long tenure, the proudest moment that night was to raise my hand for this policy. And it's been in in effect for a long time now. And I think it is making a difference. I think we still have lots to do. And I'm just, I think about that evening and it was the students that called us on it and said, you've got to make some changes because this district is not safe enough for all, all students. And I'm just wondering about, I don't know about surveys, but just some touch. I mean, those students may have been have graduated. touch, I mean, those students may have been, have graduated since then, but a touch with, um, the students, you know, um, how are we doing? What, and I know we have the committee, but, um, what else could we be doing? And I know the reps are on the committee, but they don't speak for all our students. And I'm just wondering, is there a touch point? An organized touch point where we can say we've heard and you would, we should do this.
Absolutely. Great question. Uh, there continues to be opportunities for students to, to have voice and, um, you know, there are SOGI leads at each of our secondary schools who are connected to, um, GSAs that operate within those schools. So they are conduit to the SOGI advisory with, uh, our district coordinator. So a lot of times, uh, there are specific questions or themes that come up from students in the schools that do make their way to the advisory. So, um, an example has been, you know, the students, uh, wanting safe spaces in schools such as washroom spaces. So the gender neutral washing piece, um, has been, you know, a focus in previous years and continues to be a part of that. Um, in the student voice forum that took place in May, uh, you know, we had students who are representative of diverse, uh, groups as well, who had an opportunity to share some, some insights and, uh, we've also had a SOGI employee scan, which took place last year, um, which we continue to analyze in terms of just where staff are at and identifying areas of growth. So, uh, having those students there as part of the advisory, but also connecting with students who might not be part of the formal advisory, but are in the secondary schools and, and are part of those, uh, GSA clubs who do connect to the rainbow cafes and, and the, the the pride event that we had last week. Uh, that's where we continue to hear, hear our students.
Thank you. And if there was a way to get a broader, um, for next school year, I'd be really interested in that.
One piece I will mention, trustee sergeant, is, uh, the McCreary, um, Society, the, the B C Adolescent Health Survey, which we administered, uh, this spring for the first time in five years. Uh, there are questions on that survey that were around also, um, gender, identity, uh, racial background, ethnic background. Uh, we haven't received the results from that survey yet, but, uh, I am sure that that will give us some good insight, uh, because that survey was administered at, uh, all of our secondary schools and a selection of, uh, elementary schools in grade seven.
Something we can take away as well, you know, as we look at student voice as a priority, uh, you know, within the strategic priorities as well as, you know, there's multiple touch points, but to your point of how are we ensuring we have that diverse range? And that's something we're, we're looking into through student voice and we can continue to explore that for sure.
It's my hand first. You're, you go ahead if you like. I'm happy to.
I, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Chairperson. Um, thank you so much, staff, for this, um, uh, update. Uh, I have one question and a quick comment. So, uh, trustee sergeant was speaking about, um, student voice, and so I wanted to ask about student representation on, on the committee. And I was just wondering if we have a group, a diverse group of students, um, on this committee, uh, that are representative of our s- various schools that they're at, um, throughout our district and the gender expressions.
Yes, great question, uh, trustee Yang. I would say in my two years being part of the advisory, we do have a diverse student representation in terms of geographic location within Richmond, but also, um, the students who have been participating in terms of, uh, some of those intersections, sort of their, uh, racial, ethnic background as well. Um, we, we do continue to stress and, uh, support students of different backgrounds being part of that advisory group.
Good. I think the intersectional lens is so important when it comes to achieving our work here. So I commend staff for that. Um, and, and I just wanted to say that, um, I'm glad this report also points out that, uh, you know, with respect to goal three, there is, uh, it's an area of growth. And, you know, like the mental health presentation we saw earlier this year, um, recognizing that there are intergenerational things like internet, uh, intergenerational challenges, uh, so forth that needs to be addressed, barriers that need to be broken down and, uh, stigmas that need to be unlearned. And so I think, uh, I commend staff for highlighting that area of growth in the report. And just again, thank you to committee members as well for their work to ensure that all students feel welcomed, safe and respected uh, in our district regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identities. Thank you.
Trustee Larson.
It's interesting that you bring that up because, um, it was quite an experience to be on the committee and then on part of the subcommittee. And so for, I guess, three years and this past year, when, uh, they had the first meeting at McNeil, I couldn't believe the amount of more students that had, had joined. It was wonderful to see and, and, and were expressive. And you could see the, 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 the safe, um, the safety that was there because at the beginning, you know, it was quiet for everybody, you know? It took time to, to build a trust and, and, and so on. And then to, to see these kids start to just, you know, there were like fifteen sort of thing, whereas before there were three or, or whatever that, that growth was, um, exciting. And also the sharing and different secondary schools. It was, it was really quite something to experience. The other thing I'm really happy to hear is that there was, um, something for the staff, you, you said a little while ago, uh, or, or that happened a little while ago. Cause I, it's as important for our staff to feel safe, um, as it is for the students, for everybody, whether it's staff, a parent, um, a brother or a sister coming into the school. Everyone should feel safe in our schools, not, you know, obviously the focus is on our students, of course, but in order to make that safe for our students, we have to make it safe for everybody. And, and I see that happening, you know, slowly but surely. And, um, I think the more people understand what we're doing, that will, that will grow. But, um, yeah, it's, um, I was, again, really touched by the amount of kids and the openness and the safety, uh, the feeling of safety sitting around that group was really, really wonderful. So thank you.
Trustee Beliza.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. My question would be on strategic priority two, goal three and four, working alongside with parents and family. And then on goal four, communicating effectively among students and families. It's more of the parents, families, that side of the spectrum that sometimes raises a lot of questions. So my, my, my question would be, in your engagement, what are some of the barriers, challenges or problems that you have that you can share with the board insofar as engagement with the parents and families? Either they're supporting or any idea, uh, any, uh, thing that, uh, probably expresses their opinion.
Thanks for the question, trustee Beliza. I think there's a, a range of, um, you know, things that we're looking at as a, as a, as a committee. You know, sometimes you have, and, and this is common when you look at a lot of the different equity topics that are really highlighted today, uh, whether it's, you know, indigenous education, um, anti-racism and, and SOGI is you have sometimes a generation of parents who didn't have the same exposure, the same opportunities in terms of that learning. And sometimes the kids, because of what they're learning, they're, you know, in some ways they're, they're ahead of their, their own parents because, um, you know, the parents haven't had that opportunity. There are sometimes some, some other nuances that I think we have to be mindful of. In, in Richmond, we have a lot of different, you know, diverse communities throughout the city. And, um, you know, there are nuances where we need to, uh, bring people together and bring people along and explain, you know, the spirit of the policy and, and how it is grounded in the, the human rights code and why it's so important. So, um, this year we did have a, you know, a scheduled session with the Unlearned Organization to, to run a parent session, but unfortunately the presenter fell ill and, uh, we weren't able to do that. But, uh, that's why we've highlighted as an area of growth for, for next year to continue to engage, uh, the parent community. You know, hear their, hear their thoughts, hear their questions and, uh, you know, talk about the work that's happening in, in elementary and secondary schools because we, we do continue to progress and move forward.
I have myself on the list. There's, um, that you, you mentioned, um, updating book bundles and, um, inviting teacher librarians to explore new resources for the, the book bundles provided to each elementary school. So, um, just wondered what has been the uptake on that? Because I think it's, you know, really important to have all those, um, resources in our library. And, um, so what's the response been to the, to the book bundle?
Thanks for the, uh, question, uh, Chair Tavlani. So we did provide books, to my understanding, a few, uh, years ago to all elementary schools. And, and right now the plan is to further look at that for next year in terms of updating, um, the book collections, because I think, uh, you know, we, when we consider how much things have evolved in the last few years, uh, the number of resources that are available has expanded as well. So for us, it's really just the initial planning right now.
Okay.
Uh, but the real purpose is to invite teacher librarians to be part of those conversations and explore how these resources can, can support SOGI education, um, within the school for, for students and for staff.
Great. Thank you. I think we'll, we have a couple more reports, but thank you, um, so much. Look, you know, again, look how far we've come, um, from, you know, when we first adopted the policy. I, I just, you know, so thankful that we're, we're moving on and, and, um, making ground and creating, you know, safe spaces and learning, uh, as we go. So, thank you so much. Okay. And the next report uh, is our D E I Advisory Committee Annual Update. I think this is the first annual update for the D E I Committee and, um, acting Deputy Superintendent, uh, Brodegham is here to report. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. You're right. This is the first report of the D E I Advisory Committee. Um, so the, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion is what D E I stands for, uh, and the annual update begins on page thirty-seven of your meeting package. Um, the report is organized to highlight the work of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee and provide an update on the work taking place in the district in regards to the priorities identified for the, for the advisory committee's focus. The priorities for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee connect directly to the goals and objectives of strategic priority two, goal two, as well as strategic priority one, goal three, priority two, goal one, priority four, goal one, and priority five, goal three. The report is organized to illustrate the connections to the strategic plan and each priority of the D E I Advisory Committee. And below each priority are highlighted examples of the work that is underway in the district in support of each priority and the intended, intended next steps for each priority area. This June marks the end of the first year of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, and the members of the D E I Advisory Committee have been invaluable in providing their input and suggestions on the work that is underway to identify strengths and gaps in regards to D E I. Where gaps have been identified, they form our next steps as outlined in the report. We have been in a period of fact gathering and engaging a thoughtful process with voice from our partner groups to develop actions that are meaningful and have sustained impact. As we gather anecdotal evidence, the need to work together to gather meaningful quantitative evidence to determine if our actions are making a difference and having intended impact is one of our next steps. Feedback from this year indicates that there is a strong desire from our partner groups for more learning and training opportunities, a need to make the system for reporting acts of harm more clear and more accessible, and an importance in updating our policies. Thus, actions are underway to make learning and training more accessible next year through the implementation of a non-instructional day with an indigenous focus and contracting an anti-racism specialist to focus on D E I learning and training for all employee groups in order to augment the work of learning services and human resources in this area and to work to meet the needs of staff and improve experiences for our students. The advisory committee will also be prioritizing the review of a system for reporting harm augmented by the Ministry of Education and Childcare's Anti-Racism Action Plans, forthcoming Incident Response Guidelines and Resource Guide, and a review of policies to bring to the policy committee, all with a view to continue to work towards equitable and inclusive learning and working environments for students, staff and the entire community of School District Thirty-eight. In conclusion, I would like to thank the Board of Education for its ongoing support of the work of the D E I Advisory Committee and the commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion work through the identified priorities of the committee and also of strategic, of the strategic plan, particularly priority two, equity and inclusion. I'd also like to thank the members of the committee for their time and commitment to this year and their commitment to the work of the committee. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
If you have any questions. Trustee Sergeant.
Thanks. Uh, not really a question, but, you know, when we've, we're talking about forming the committee, we said we don't want it to be the work of the committee and no one else. And what I see is, you know, I am part of the committee and the incredible discussions that we have in the safe place that has been created by you. Thank you. And the work, when you see it in the report, is, is extensive, but you wouldn't necessarily know that because you're not just agenda-driven and, but still the work gets done. But, you know, I do see lots of other people in lots of other departments weaving it into their work. You know, I think of the H R department and just the goals with D E I around in our strat plan. It isn't just the work of the D E I Committee, and so I'm really happy about that. Um, because I see it's integrated throughout the organization and, you know, I hope we, we go further with everybody, you know, working towards it. But the hub with the advisory committee is really helpful, I think. And I just wanted to thank you for your leadership on that, and I look forward to next year.
Me too. Thank you.
Um, I think it's, uh, trustee Beliza's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for this very good report. First, I, I look forward to hearing from the audit report from the Paccow Consulting, providing recommendations for updating the number of specific policies as well as suggestion for additional policy development sometimes and forth. My question is, uh, we're talking of D E I, and, uh, the first thing that I noticed in the, uh, membership of the advisory committee, which is used to, uh, advise on the implementation of these established priorities, for the interest of the student, and there are no student representation. Although I noted that, uh, in your report, there is some kind of students, a formal representative of the D I A C and two G A C. Uh, may I know the, the rationale why they are not considered part of the, uh, advisory comit- committee?
There are students on the D E I Advisory Committee. There are two students, uh, represented. Uh, there may be an error in my report if that is missing from the list.
Okay, thank you.
Noticed that as well, so glad to hear that. That answers my question. Okay, uh, I, uh, trustee Yang and then trustee.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you, acting Deputy Superintendent for this report. I do have a handful of questions again, but just, it, it's such an important piece of work for our district. So I'd just like to, uh, have more context and see.
Maybe just a couple and then follow up.
So i- i- I think in the report it mentions curriculum opportunities, um, with respect to initiatives such as Black Excellence U B C, Strive Program with the K P U, Black is our B A A course, of course, and, um, supporting the Asian Studies, uh, Ministry course. So I'm just wondering if you can provide a high level summary of how things are going these initiatives within our district and, uh, yeah, what, what the progress has been.
Yeah, so, uh, the Strive Program or this, our affiliation with Strive Program at K P U has been underway this year. The B A, B A A course is, uh, ready for implementation. Um, the, uh, work with the Asian Studies course, same, uh, piece, although that is a ministry-developed course. And so our hope is to, uh, increase enrollment and offerings of that, uh, course across the district. Um, and sorry, what was the other one?
Black Excellence U B C.
Oh, yeah. So we've been, uh, increasing our participation. So our students go and attend the Black Excellence Conference. either in person or virtually, and, and each year it's offered slightly differently. As we move out of COVID, there's more opportunities for virtual engagement, which of course allows us to have larger groups of students attend from their schools and participate in that conference as well, which is awesome because it's more students that can participate than could necessarily go there in person.
Our brains coming together.
Absolutely.
Other school districts. And then my second question is, I know there's been talks about adding more indigenous gathering spaces, so I'm just wondering if there's any progress on finding that location.
I may have to refer to Assistant Superintendent McMillan for that, to answer that question.
Hi, yes. Thank you for the question. We've been working with facilities and Executive Director Guyer. I won't throw it to you because we'll keep it back and forth between the two of us to identify some consistent indigenous gathering spaces. So one of the interesting pieces that emerged this year is where we started to look at some spaces that we could move forward with. Due to enrollment pressures, those spaces changed. And so we've been continuing to navigate because what we're trying to do is land on the space that we feel we consistent over time, while also addressing placement at different geographical areas, not currently close to an existing indigenous gathering space. So it's a, we've had ongoing conversations and continue to do that as we look at enrollment for this coming school year. What are some spaces that remain open that we might be able to access that we also feel will be more consistent because we don't want to put something in for a year and then have to move to another space after that?
Sure. Trustees will be, stay tuned for that for sure. And then just one last question regarding the reporting guidelines for incidents causing harm. I just, just to clarify, this is a resource that will be aimed to support students as well as staff.
That's correct. Yes. So when we received feedback through the audit report and the work of the working group, that was a big area of feedback around feeling safe to report when something has happened and knowing what the follow-up will be. So we'll be bringing a draft of that.
And that would include things like microaggressions.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, trustee Larson. Just quick minor comments again. An honor to sit on that committee. What I've noticed is there's such a wide representation of our partner groups on that committee with students, R D P A, just our, our maps every, and, and to, to have people come back and share what they've started to see in their particular department and how that's growing, how posters made a difference and, and, and they're, they're little, they might be little comments, but they're huge steps. And I, I think, again, that the representation with, with human resources in particular and the different areas, the students, ourselves, just the growth, I think, is, is, I, I see it starting to happen. Like, at the beginning, working on the policy checklist, and, and it's growing. And so I, I want to thank you for that. But I, but again, the different ideas that are, as, as trustee sergeant said, it's a safe place to share ideas, and it's building that foundation. And as one of the members said the other day, that as we're building the foundation, we need to take our time to do it right because it's so damaging. If, if we don't, we jump into something too quickly, we come back, it's, it can be devastating. So it, it's, it's, it's good to see that movement happening slowly but surely in one foot in front of the other. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for the report, and I was just going to make a comment to trustee Belisa's question on the Bakao Report and the findings of the survey. We did have that, and there was a report generated. That was quite, that was a while ago. So I believe, I'm not sure if it's on the website, but perhaps we can have that sent to you. Trustee Belisa.
Looking forward to the discussion.
Yeah, it, it, it was discussed at length. So, but we can send you the report. It was, that was brought forward a while ago. I think previous to your term on the, on the board. So we can have that sent to you. It's very interesting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Since, you know, the inception of the committee, it's, it's wonderful to actually see the fruits of the labor. So, great. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, the annual charitable donations report. And we like charitable donations. They help us a lot. So. And reporting is Assistant Secretary Treasurer Maria Foo. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Bring us the money.
I aim to please. So the charitable donation report is on page forty nine of your package. So I'm pleased to report that the twenty twenty-two charitable donations covers the period from January first to December thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. Through the generous donations of our donors, we've received a total of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents in donations for the twenty twenty-two year, which encompasses two hundred ninety-four thousand, ninety-four dollars, ninety-four dollars and ninety cents in cash donations and the remaining thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents in donation in kind of tax of, of tangible goods. So once again, we would like to express our gratitude to all of our generous donors, the Richmond School District. I am open to any questions.
Do trustees have any questions? Trustee Yang.
Thank you, chairperson. Yeah, just a quick question on this one. I'm wondering if, if staff has a breakdown of the donation. We have a breakdown of the donation amount by site, by schools. Just wondering if there's a breakdown in terms of what came in from individuals versus organizations, private or public?
Yes, there is a breakdown. Currently, we do not share that in public due to the wishes of a number of donors who wants to remain anonymous. If you would like that information, we can provide it to you after the fact.
I, I just wanted to say as well, it, it shows that our, our community is rebounding in terms of financial health, seeing that we have an increase from the previous year. And so it shows that civil society and everybody's coming back stronger. And so happy to see that. Thanks for all your work.
Just on one note, Richmond donors have been extremely generous. And just to put it into context, our record donation was in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, during the year of COVID, which we received over three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. So even in times of difficulties, our donors have stepped up and helped the school district.
Any other questions, trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, thank you for this report. My question is, these are donations. How much we, did we spend for this donation? And if the remaining balance is, what would be the status of those funds so far ours or budget or financial statement, as you said?
These donations are reported in our audited financial statements under the Special Purpose Fund section, which is on Schedule Three, A and B. So you can see what went through. It's under categories of scholarships and bursaries. In terms of the expenditures, because donors target the fund for a specific cause, depending on the purpose of what they wish the donation to go towards, it could take some time. For instance, if it was for a playground, it could take many years before the, there would be enough funds in order to purchase a playground. Other donations could be more general in nature, and if it is directed to a school, the funds does get redirected to the schools for their use.
Thank you. I just was, you know, wanted to point out, and I think I'm correct in this, this does not include Feedgate donations, like donations to our breakfast programs, correct?
Actually, if there were donations for Feedgate, it will be included because there is a, in the page fifty, which is the detail of the cash donation, there is a site location called Feedgate.
Okay. All right. I can't find it at the moment, but I will look. Yeah.
It's in alphabetical order, so it's about a, a third way down the list.
Yes, okay, I see it. Okay, perfect. Okay, so it does include our Feedgate donations. All right, because, you know, our, our people have been very generous. Our community has been very generous towards that initiative as well, and highly needed. So, thank you for the report. So anything that has gone to specific schools that is under a school site that stays actually at the school. Okay. And it's used for their purposes. Thank you for the report. Oh, trustee Wong.
Well, I refilled all of the table. Some of the schools didn't have any donation. So is that the reason for the specific elementary school is used by their own school donation?
Yes, because donations are based on the wishes of the donor. And if they choose a certain school to donate to, that is where the funds are directed to.
I just concern about some of them didn't have any donation. How, how that's going to work for?
Yes, that is the unfortunate stuff of donation because it is based on the wishes of who's donating. And we are not permitted by C R A to then redirect that funds to another purpose. It must stay based on the purpose of what the donors want the funds to go to.
I just have one other quick question. McNair received a don, you know, a Honda Civic. And so McNair has a mechanics program. Is that correct? I believe. Was that what that, that car is for? It's under the in-kind.
Donation in kind. Yes, I believe they do. I.
Okay.
But I am not sure.
Okay, I'd be curious to know how many vehicles they've received and what their policy is on that. Currently have one sitting at our house and donated. I know that we did years and years and years ago when we lived by McNair donate a motorcycle and they took it. Very happy to get. Anyway.
My understanding is that it has to be able to be transported to the school. We, at the school district, does not tow vehicles to.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the report. It's very interesting. And whoever donated the base clarinet for two thousand two hundred and four dollars, that's amazing. Base clarinets are expensive. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the five-year capital plan. Once again, Mr. Guyer, our Executive Director of Facilities, it is this is our last report for the five-year capital plan.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. So you have before you a report and summary of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Richmond Board of Education Five-Year Capital Plan. Our plan contains forty-five projects eligible for funding out of various ministry programs, broken down as follows. Twenty-one projects are included in the sizing mitigation program, six in the school and expansion program, five in the school enhancement program, two projects in the carbon neutral capital plan, uh, program, sorry, three in the bus replacement program. And this is a change because earlier, when I, when I shared our draft five-year plan with trustees at Facilities Building Committee, we weren't, we had none eligible and, but now we have up to six that we get partial funding from the federal, or from the Ministry of Infrastructure. And so we're just waiting for the Ministry of, Ministry of, Ministry of Child, of Education and Childcare to come up with the balance of funding. So we have three in that program. We got three in the playground equipment program. We've got one project in the new school food infrastructure program, which was just announced this year. And we have four projects in the building envelope program. There's also one site acquisition for a future city center elementary school as identified in our eligible school site, well, eligible school site proposal. In all, our capital plan submission totals over eight hundred and thirty million dollars. The due dates for the submissions to the ministry are June thirtieth for the projects contained in the major capital programs, which is the seismic and the expansion programs. September thirtieth for the minor capital programs, which are school enhancement, climate neutral capital, bus replacement, playground equipment, and school food infrastructure, as well as for the building envelope programs. As per ministry instructions, each of these submissions will require a separate board adoption and resolution. Excuse me. All projects contained in the capital plan are consistent with and prioritized as per the district long-range facilities plan with input and guidance from the Ministry of Education and Childcare Capital Management Branch. We expect to hear back from the ministry sometime in early twenty twenty-four as to which projects are supported or approved for implementation in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. The recommended action tonight is that the board approve the capital plan as presented. I can answer any questions you may have pertaining to the projects or the plan at this time. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Trustee Sergeant.
Yeah, it's going to be about the playground funding, and I don't believe there was much money put forward provincially, and we didn't get any, is that correct this year?
And that's.
Those, that, sorry, two questions.
Yeah, through.
Is that correct?
Yeah, through, through the chair, there was no, yeah, we didn't get, there were no playground improvement projects approved this last year.
Thank you. And then are these the same three then that didn't get it last?
Correct.
Trustee Yang.
Just a quick question along the same veins of trustee sergeant, but on the carbon neutral capital program, has that, did we get projects in that previous year and?
Through the chair, yes, we did. Last year, we received funding for L E D lighting upgrades at, I believe it was two schools. And we also, we also received funding for mechanical controls through, I, I don't have the list in front of me, but we, we've, we have had great success with getting funding out of this program, which is basically the, the, the funding is derived from every year, public school districts have to submit their, their climate or their, their greenhouse gas emissions plan. And we have to pay carbon offsets to become carbon neutral. This money is then reinvested back into school districts upon application for means to become carbon neutral from a mechanical basis as opposed to a financial basis.
Any other questions? I have one. So on this five-year cap, okay, never mind. I, I found it. Priorities, yeah.
I'll move recommendations.
Okay. The recommendation's been moved. Trustee Larson, who, no, who seconded? Sorry. Secondary trustee Larson. Any more discussion? I just wanted to. I just wanted to note the costs. I, I, I just noticed that, you know, we've had a lot of these projects on five-year capital plan before, and I just can't believe how much they've gone up, so we're talking lots of dollars. But anyway, has to be done, so I'm gonna call the question then, all those in favor? And the motion's carried, thank you. I don't know if we've read it, but anyway. Was to approve the capital plan, thank you. Okay, that finishes our business arising. There is no new business, this is another opportunity for questions from the public. No questions from the public. Standing committee reports, audit committee. Trustee Yang.
Thank you, chairperson, so the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September nineteen, twenty twenty-three.
And education committee, trustee Larson, and there is also a recommendation on the alternate programs review.
Yes, I will read the recommendation that the Board of Education Richmond directs staff to proceed with the recommendations contained in the alternate program review, review report, sorry about that. And I would just like, in the conclusion, the Richmond School District is committed to enacting change that will improve experiences for all learners. Alternate programs in the Richmond School District work to support some of the district's most vulnerable learners on their pathway to significance. And the review has provided an important opportunity to engage in determining next steps to continue to enhance supportive opportunities for students.
Okay, is there any questions? Is there a secondor for the recommendation that trustee Larson has moved? Trustee Wong, seconds, so there's, is there any more discussion? Alright, I will call the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Liberties and Buildings Committee. The chair is not here, so I am the vice chair. So there's, there's minutes of a meeting held May third. I attached in the package and a meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September sixth at four thirty. If that's illegal.
Oh, thank you very much, the next meeting is Wednesday, September twentieth at ten AM.
While everybody is wrapping up, Policy Committee is still going. Hang on a sec, we have some work that we need to approve. Okay, I, Policy Committee has a recommendation that the Board of Education approved the attached revised policy two oh one and two oh one by law board operations in accordance with board policy two oh four creation and revision of policy and regulations. Looking for a second, trustee Yang. Okay, and just, just to let you know, this one's been around the block. At February twenty-second, the meeting of the board, the board approved two oh one to enter into the stakeholder review process. And there was no additional feedback. It's been to several meetings, including the public board meetings. So it is here ready for approval, so I'm wondering, are there any questions? Okay, I will call a question, all those in favor? Okay, policy is passed, thank you. The next one is that the board approve the attached policy three one one, three one one R, which is the freedom of information and protection of privacy in accordance with board policy two oh four. And this is, you know, due to legislation, legislative requirements. And so this did not go out for feedback, but has been discussed, and so it is here for approval. Are there any questions? I will call, oh, I need a secondor, sorry, seconded by trustee Yang. So I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? The motion is not, policy has passed. I'm having a long with our policy work, okay, and the final one is six two one and six two one R, financial planning and reporting, and policy six three one R accumulated at operating surplus and capital reserves. And the motion is that the board approve the attached revised policy six two one, six two one R, financial planning, reporting, and policy six three one R, accumulated operated surplus and capital reserves in accordance with our board policy two oh four. And so I believe this was, this was to align with the ministry's directives, that we must have these policies and they must, you know, align with the ministry. What the ministry requires, I believe it came from the auditor general. So with that, it did not go into the feedback process, I don't think. So because it is something that we have to comply with with the ministry, so it is here for approval, I'm looking for. Trustee Sergeant. And are there any more, any questions? Okay, I'll call the question, all in, all. Everyone in favor? Okay, motion has passed. Okay. So those have passed, thank you very much for your patience. Board Committee representative reports, council board, the next meeting is Wednesday, September thirteenth, and for B C S T A, B C P C, there is nothing, correspondence. We had a letter from the B C chapter of the Coalition for Healthy School Food. And, and that's here for action, but I think before I mentioned that we had a letter from Richmond Poverty Reduction Coalition, and their letter was along the same lines, they were asking for, you know, funding for our our school food programs, which actually we did receive from, from the Ministry of Education, which was a gift, and so we met with the Poverty Reduction Coalition and talked to them further about what they wanted in the letter. And they wanted to see something federally, a federal policy on food and also sustainable, you know, sustainable food, I mean universally. So what we did was, we did take this to, this to our MLAs. Or I mean, our, well, our MLAs and our MPs, so, so we have acted on their request and advocated for our district and on their behalf. And so we will send a letter to the B C chapter of the Coalition or on behalf of the B C chapter of the Coalition for Healthy School Food, correct? Much to the same, the same as we did for the poverty reduction. That's that one, so for action, I guess, I should make a motion to to send that letter as well. It was going to the federal government. Was it going to MPs? Okay, so do we need a motion then to do this?
No.
Okay, because it says for action, alright, thank you. And then also, we have a letter that came from the E L L consortium, and it was asking for some action from us regarding our Swiss workers, our settlement workers in schools. There were a couple of asks, some of them were timing issues, and I'm going to let trustee Yang speak to that, because he sits on the consortium.
Thank you, chairperson, and so, and just to provide some background information, so as the, as the representative to the E L L consortium from the Richmond Board of Education, I, I just wanted to report that the letter that is in front of you is a piece of advocacy work that the consortium has, has done some work on. And the primary issue is around the fact that fiscal years between the immigration refugees and citizenship Canada misaligns with district fiscal years. So there is a challenge in that, because there is this mismatch, that all funds are not utilized properly, and there are slippages in the budget. But recognizing also that with growth in settlement services demand, there are pressures on staffing and the continued difficulty of having funding for permanent residents and refugees, but not having funding for other groups that require settlement services, and so some of these were highlighted in this work. And so with that, the letter is sent to us and and what we did was, we brought this forward to our members of parliament during our conversations. And so we have provided those direct asks, and those are to, to ask the federal government to provide funding through a multi-year grant rather than a contribution agreement model, which is the model that we operate in, in, for the Richmond district. And that will just allow for more flexibility to utilize those funds and to avoid that under utilization and slippages. And the second ask is along the same vein, it's for the federal government to authorize the use of grant funding for projects with budgets over one million dollars, and our, our school district is over that. And so, yeah, I just wanted to end off by saying thank you to staff in this district for their work to prepare and support our advocacy on this important issue, but also extend thanks to trustees and staff across districts, which participate in the E L L consortium for bringing this issue to light and for their dedication work on this issue. I certainly look forward to the follow-ups with our MP to continue this conversation and to see this issue make its way to Ottawa, where we can hopefully see some change. Thank you.
So, and we did meet with our MPs, it was really a healthy discussion, and they were very receptive to all our advocacy. And so packages and letters and information will be going, they requested information on our food programs and the advocacy to take back to their ministers and also on the immigration and our Swiss workers. So those packages are being put together with the covering letters, and they'll be going to our MPs and trustees, all of that before. And we thank our MPs for taking the time to meet with us. That's it, so with that, before I move adjournment, I wanted to speak to somebody who's actually leaving, and we're very sad to see him go, because Mr. Frank Guyer, who has been involved and, and moved us forward on many projects, our seismic projects and our capital projects especially. He's just done wonders, because before he came along, we were stuck. We were not moving ahead, and we were not getting projects, we didn't have a long-range facilities plan, and the list goes on, and he has just done mountains, and him and his staff have done mountains and mountains of work and moved this district forward and left us in a much better place than, than when he came to the district. I, I remember visiting a school and having a principal saying, you know, when schools look unkempt and have not been upgraded in any way and not even cosmetically, it affects the morale of the people that work in the building and the students. And I would have to say that Mr. Guyer and his, has directed his staff in making our facilities much better, and I, you know, I'm, and I hope, and I'm pretty darn sure that the morale has gone up and we're far better off than with you having been our facilities, our director the time that you've been here, and I, I can't say enough, I really appreciate. And so we just wanted to recognize you and wish you, you know, all the best in your retirement, and we don't want you to go away, so we're hoping you'll still help us, because he works wonders with the Ministry of Education too. He's got the gift of gab, and, and he knows how to, how to plead for us. So I also have a message from one of your friends who worked very closely with you. His name is Roy Ueno, he wanted to send you a message. He was our past secretary treasurer. So he said, since this is Frank Guyer's final board meeting, I want to extend my sincere graduate congratulations to Frank on his well-deserved upcoming retirement from the Richmond School District. The district has benefited from his leadership and skill in capital planning, facilities management, and expertise in seismic upgrading of schools. You will be missed, I'm not certain. I was fortunate to have worked with Frank during my time as secretary treasurer, and we have developed a great friendship and look forward to spending time with you on the golf course. Not too much time, though. Just some, anyway. So we just want to thank you so much, and we're so appreciative of the time that you've spent with us, and it's been enjoyable, and I have to say it one more time, you are a magic man. And the other person that is kind of retiring is Dion McPhee, who's been with the Richmond District Parents Association for a very long time, and she's been a fixture in, in our meetings and any committees and events, and, and has advocated for the students and parents of our school district for, for a number of years. And we've been so thankful for her involvement in the District Parents Association and her help for our district. So we want to congratulate you, and we're sorry that you're leaving, because we all know that once parents age out of the system with their students, then they're not, they can't be a member of the district pack anymore, which is, should be changed. Anyway, so we're also wishing you well. Anyway, so we're also wishing you well. And we'll miss you, but hoping we can consult with you once in a while, too. So anyway, that's it, I'm I'm calling for adjournment. Moved by trustee Yang, seconded by trustee Larson. All those in favor? And we have a little treat for everybody for Mr. Guyer's retirement. It'll give me a minute to to get it set up and then everybody can share it with us.